Albion Planning Commission to Order. If you have a cellphone, please turn it off or put on silent mode. Jill, can we roll call the commission?
Garrett Brown, Scott Brown, Becky Decker, Scott Kip, Tom Pitt, Sharon Pines, Lynn Reed, Greg Strand, and George Strander.
Here, thank you. I want to welcome the new members of the commission. Becky and Lynn is, and Sharon, is she here? Okay, so, does she, does she have a seat yet?
Yes.
There we go, yeah, there, see right up there. All right, we'll move on to approval of the prior meeting minutes. Everyone should have draft minutes from our last meeting, January 18th. Give everyone a second to look them through. And then I'll entertain a motion either for approval or for amendment.
Will we approve the minutes?
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the minutes as drafted. Seeing none, we'll bring the matter to vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes as drafted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, they're approved. Correspondent, Cheryl, anyone writing to us?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Okay, so now we're going to move on to item number five, which is a public hearing on the community garden applications. And I'm going to open that public hearing right now. And John, I'm going to ask you to give us a background on these requests.
John Tracy, Director of Planning, Building, and Code. The first one on the community gardens is for 401 and 403 West Center Street. In your packet, you have the application with the signatures and information with the drawing on it. These are to meet the required setbacks for the districts, which was included in your packet, where there are two, the front, rear, and side yard setbacks. There are some exceptions to those if there are no other structures on the, on the street and/or if there are structures within 100 feet that do not meet the required setbacks for that area or the average. So if you had a 25-foot setback and there were structures on the street adjacent to the properties that say were 15 and 17, then the average of those two would be what you would be required for those gardens to be back. On 401 and 403, if you look through on that there, there are the requirements that are required to be turned in, the signature of the property owners, the signatures of the applicants, which they were, sketch location of all existing and proposed structures. There is a sketch attached. The square footage is not indicated, which is required on there, so I would suggest that that be included. Proposed layout of the garden plots and fencing referred to in section 3149 lot area. There again, that gives you the setbacks towards the bottom of the page that are required. And then temporary fence materials and type and height is not indicated on that, so you have your, on your sketch, if you look at it.
John, you referring to this?
Yes, a sketch, sketch for the first application. They do have the 20-foot back, 20-foot, 20-foot front yard setbacks. The side yards on here are shown as five. There is a vacant area to the west on that, so there's not a house directly to the west. And of course, the other is abutting a street. So primarily, you're looking at 10-foot, but without anything being next to them, that's basically a call of the planning commission. As far as the fence type there again, I would suggest you know what the fence type is, the height. On corner lots, fences are not supposed to be over three-foot in height on the corner for obstruction of view in the front yards, so. And in this case here, they do set back at least 25-foot, so I would say if you have a four-foot high fence setting that far back, that would meet requirements, but there again, it needs to be indicated. And the last part of that is it's required to indicate what type of water will be used for irrigation. And in what the application refers to city water, and I would let Cheryl address that part there.
So John, just so everyone's aware, this is an application for designation of certain two lots in these cases, a community garden, right?
Correct, for community gardens, yes.
And just so everyone is aware, what does that allow? What does that, what does that allow?
That allows for there to be sheds and other, they can have sheds for storage, greenhouses on it, hoop houses. The combination of all buildings except for hoop house cannot exceed 300 square feet. Picnic tables are allowed for the community gardens. There are requirements for trash receptacles to be placed on these sites. Water can be, for irrigation, can be in either onsite tanks up to 1,000 gallons or on trailer tanks up to 1,000 gallons onsite for it. What they are to be used as a community garden, there is not to be any sale of product, food product at the site. They can take it to a district that is approved for sale of the garden, vegetables or flowers, whichever you're raising on it. And they can raise food crop on it and/or flowers.
Okay, and just so we're clear, you mentioned a few things that you thought were not included in the application that needed to be. Is that right?
Correct.
And could you just give us a short list of that again?
Okay, the type of temporary fence, the type of materials that are being used, and the height, the size of the shed that will be used, so we know that it's not exceeding 300 square feet, which I doubt it would, but we need to have it on there. And then, of course, parking is indicated on there, that it's on-street parking. If it were to be on, and that's another part of it, if that were to be on-premise parking, they don't have to be on an approved surface, but they indicate that they have parking on the street, so.
And you mentioned something about square footage as well?
Square footage of any of your structures.
Any of the structure, okay.
Unless it's a hoop house, there's not a limitation on that.
Okay, and this, right now, we're looking just at the 401 and 403?
Correct. There is another application after this one.
All right, well, before I open up to everyone else, Cheryl, John just mentioned something about water. Did you want to weigh in on that?
Yes, you'll notice in your packet, there is a sheet that indicates supplement to application for community gardens. It's about a third of the way in.
Yep.
And, yep. And it references that they are requesting the installation of a frost-free hydrant that can be locked, just like the one located on the northwest corner of Michigan Avenue and Monroe Street. As the alternative, they would be interested in purchasing water storage tanks that meet the size requirements contained in the zoning ordinance. And we just need some clarification and agreement relative to the cost relative to the installation as well for the water usage. It's come to our attention that our ordinances do not permit us to give away water, so it didn't quite make sense to have a meter in this type of location. So I spoke with the Director of Public Services, who's over the water department, and we are agreeable to working out language that would allow a flat rate for these community organizations that are doing a public service. So that would have to be worked out, and if they're in agreement with that, we can move forward with that aspect.
Okay.
The one other part of that, too, is that there will be a permit required for the water when it's hooked up, if the inspector makes sure that it has backdoor protection.
Okay, great, thank you.
There would have to be a permit, a common permit updated for, so it'll have to be inspected for actual protection, so, also your.
Is there a representative of the applicant here who wants to come forward? Can you just give us your name?
Good evening. My name is Mary Moore, and I am the treasurer of the Albion Community Gardens, Inc., which is a nonprofit 503(c) corporation. Our president, Richard Porter, is out of town tonight, as is our vice president, Willie Taub. So I'm here by default. I have a couple of points to make. Number one, the community garden statute provides that all garden plots and any permitted structures shall meet the setbacks of the zoning ordinance. Now, these are both residential areas, and I specifically ordered an updated copy of the zoning ordinance because it's hard to keep track of how fast the zoning ordinances change. But in this specific zoning district, it seems to imply, under the growing of fruits and vegetables, not for commercial purposes, that when there are empty lots, either across the street or adjacent to these properties, the setback is five feet.
Where exactly are you reading?
It is section 3148. Both of these parcels are surrounded by vacant lots, most of them owned by the Tallow County Land Bank Authority. Therefore, I submit that a five-foot setback is appropriate in the cases that we've set forth. The other thing that Mr. Tracy indicated that we needed to have in our application is the type of fencing material and the height. I mean, we can certainly provide that, but I don't think it's required to be in the application. It certainly has to be temporary fencing that's removable at the end of each growing season, and that's what we're looking for at this time. This is a plan, I mean, there are a lot of organizations participating in this project, including St. James Episcopal Church, which is how I got involved, Vision of Life Action Team, and the college, the Food Hub. It's certainly something that we would like to see instituted in Albion. Gardening is fast becoming a lost art, I believe, and it would be our plan to try to encourage senior citizens and young people to participate in our project. We'll be glad to provide any information that you need. Based upon the application, I don't think there are any problems, but if there's anything, any questions that you want to ask me. These lots are small, I mean, they're not large, and it's important that we be able to use, utilize all the square footage, I mean, only for the purpose of planting fruits and vegetables.
Well, let me just ask here off the bat, a couple of the questions that were raised before. Do you know the type of fence and the height that you plan to use?
At this point, we plan to use snow fencing, which would be, snow fencing is four feet, I believe. I mean, that we would, you know, put away every year. It would be our plan, if our project, you know, succeeds and goes forward, to secure permanent fencing, but that would, of course, require another application.
And you know the size of, there's a shed, right?
Well, we're looking at a shed, it would be eight by 10 feet. I mean, in order, you know, to put hose in and things like that. Actually, we don't have those sheds yet. I mean, we can't afford to buy one, but it's contemplated that we will be able to secure such a shed.
Okay, so that information is, you could easily add on. The question that seems to be before us right now is whether the setback requirement that's been listed by the, by Mr. Tracy is applicable, right?
Right.
You, it's your interpretation that five feet is appropriate?
Five feet is appropriate if there's an empty lot adjoining the space, yes.
Okay, and you're basing that on 30.148?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any questions by commissioners?
Is the fence something you want, or is the fence something you feel that you need to do?
I, I'm advised by the people that know that we would need some sort of barrier to keep out rabbits and pets, dogs, cats, things like that. I mean, it's not a fence that's going to keep people out. Yes, I think that it would be important to have such a fence. But under the ordinance, you know, if it's temporary, it doesn't have to meet the requirements and will take it up every year at the end of the growing season. But yes, eventually, we'd love to have a chain link fence, I mean, a nice sturdy one, but that's not in the cards this season, mainly for money reasons.
Any other questions for Ms. Moore? Okay. Anyone else wish to get up and speak about this matter? Mr. Tracy, yeah, come on.
Well, as I said, as far as the fence call, we suggested that you do have the type, not that you had to have a specific type. I say, as far as the fence, I suggested that they require that know what the type is, not necessarily that they have to meet a certain criteria, but at least so we know what's up there. And as far as the setbacks in Underordnance 2011-01, amended section 3133 in 2011, number two, district's front yard setback shall apply, except when there are no residents on the block, block face, in which case, front yard setbacks shall be five foot, so. But there is a 25-foot setback at this location anyway, so they're set on that, but it is referred to. Ordinance 2011-01, okay, under section 130, or 30148, number two, says the district front yard setback shall apply, except when there are no residents on the same block face, and then it can be five foot, so. I wasn't disputing that you weren't far enough back, okay?
Okay, so Mr. Tracy, there isn't an issue regarding, in your mind, regarding the five feet? Or there is?
The five foot would be for the side, again, towards the side setback would be in question as far as the street side of Pearl Street, that is planning commission's call.
Okay, when you say planning's commission's call, does that mean that the ordinance allows the planning commission to have a different?
It's saying 10-foot side, unless it's a vacant lot, it's a state street. It's 10-foot to any, any side of the lot or yard line.
Which, what?
It's not a vacant lot, but it's a.
Right, okay, this is a street, so what's the ordinance that says that?
It is under the section 4B2, which is listed on there. Section 13149 lot area yard height requirements. One side 10-foot, all sides 20-foot, that's under yard two. And with that being a street, not a vacant lot, that lot lines on the street.
Ms. Moore, are you aware of that ordinance?
Your Honor, I'm sorry.
No.
Section 3141 talks about a blank block face. Now, my research indicates that we're talking about what's across the street from that. You want me to read you section 3141?
No, I, I just want to know, I want to know if you've read the 149?
Yes, I have, yes, sir, I have.
And if you believe that it applies, as Mr. Tracy.
No, I do not, Your Honor. I believe, or sir, I believe that 3148 overcomes, so to speak, because across Pearl Street is an empty lot, I mean, another empty lot. But, you know, I mean, five feet is not going to kill us, but we would like to make, take advantage of all of the area that we can.
Right, but of course, we attempt to follow the law if we can.
I understand, but it talks about, whether it's five feet or 10 feet, it talks about whether there is a vacant block face. And I, I assume that a block face means what's across the street is empty, but that could be an improper assumption.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward? Yeah, just give us your name.
My name is Tim Kraus. I'm the Executive Director of the Albion Community Foundation, 309 North Superior Street here in Albion. The original seed funding for lots of these community gardens came through the foundation. We've been supporters of this initiative since we did a study a while back showing that some of the most food-limited areas of the city are some of also the most low income. The community gardens has worked very hard to make sure that they not only are looking at properties that, that could use something on them, but that they are located in areas that need the resources that they have. Planting plants, getting your food off of the land is how we all started, and it is a much more cost-effective way than going to the grocery store once a week, or even more than that, depending on what the income flow looks like. These community gardens, in, in coordination with many of the organizations that they're working with, like Vision of Life, will help people in Albion regardless of how they end up turning out physically. The more space that they have, the more food we can provide people for reasonable amounts of money. The better people eat, the better life in Albion is. This is all interconnected. The more space we can give them, the better. Thank you.
Let me ask, if any commissioners, any questions, Mr. Kraus? Thank you. I mean, I think most of us here, if not all, are quite supportive of the concept, definitely. Anyone else who wants to come forward and speak? All right, then, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this, and move on to, Mr. Tracy, is the, is the, is the request for 213 South Albion and 618 West Erie the same issues, or is that, are there different facts?
Same.
Okay. All right. Let's just, I want to make sure, if anyone wishes to come forward and speak about 213 South Albion Street and 618 West Erie Street and the application for community garden, they can do that as well, if they wish to right now? Although I think we probably were dealing with the same issues. Is there, Mr. Tracy, from, from your perspective at least, is there an issue regarding the setback with, on that issue, on that request?
The, uh.
213.
213.
608.
618. There again, it would just be primarily on the, you know, and it's technically because of 213 being in Albion Street, probably the setback for the front, since there are structures on that block, on the face block, that's required that there be either a 10 or minimum 25-foot setback.
All right, we'll move on now to the order of business. The first one is the election of officers. I guess that's that time of year again. So we have, we have two officers on this commission, the chair and the vice chair. So let me open up the, thanks for nomination of chair. Yeah?
I nominate you as chair.
Okay. All right, we have one, you second? Okay, we have one nomination, anyone else? Anyone else? All right. So we've got one person who's been nominated for chair, that's, that's me. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you got me for another year. Now, let me open up the nominations for vice chair. Yeah?
I nominate Tom Pitt.
Okay.
Sir.
All right. Nomination for Tom to continuous vice chair. Anyone else? Any other nominations? All right, nomination is for Tom Pitt to be the vice chair of this commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, Tom. We're now going to move on to the issue of the application for the community garden located at 401 and 403 West Center Street. We had a public hearing on this matter just a few minutes ago. We heard from Mr. Tracy about his interpretation of some of the ordinances. We heard from Ms. Moore as well, and her interpretation. We've also heard from the city manager regarding the issue regarding water. So let me, let me open it up to the commission for any comments, questions, motions.
So do I understand that we don't completely know if there are areas that they may be able to have a five-foot versus 10-foot setback, and that's still a gray area? Or are we approving that it can be interpreted until it's a problem? I guess I.
I don't know, yeah.
We're just leaving that how it is?
Well, it's, one possibility is we may need to have some sort of opinion about it. I don't, I don't know. We've had, we've heard from, from two parties about two different ordinances, and which one governs what is acceptable may be a question. But then it may not be a question. But then it may not be a question in other people's minds, so.
I would, I would suggest that if it's not a problem, then interpret as you do, and if it becomes a problem, then we would reconsider it, but, yeah, more square footage, I guess, that would, that would be my take too, if it's not creating a problem and it's in a gray area, then, then that's where we leave it.
Any other comments? Yeah. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I think community gardens are a great idea, and being on the land bank, or it also helps with the grass cutting, because people have to do that, people who have a garden, it's a hero for both.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Tracy.
Just to clear things up, I'm for community gardens as much as anybody else would like to see them. And as I had mentioned at a previous meeting we had, that there's a few areas we're going to need to look at, or should look at, that will need to be tweaked some, just so that word, so the ordinance works and doesn't have any conflicting portions of it, or, or any gray areas, so we don't want to run into problems. That's one of the reasons that I had not come in tonight with a determination of what would be best as far as for hoop houses and such, because I figured there'd be a few things brought up tonight that the planning commission would probably want to talk, or at least think over, and talk over, and make some changes to this. This was written back in two thousand and eleven. When it was written, I thought it was kind of not necessarily at its greatest. So, now that we are putting it into effect, as far as my outlook at it, it needs some changes made, so. But, and also taking into consideration anybody that might live around the area, so.
Your thought, Mr. Tracy, about the setbacks, I mean, I assume you still have the same opinion?
Well, I have, I have to have the opinion of what's written, okay. But, I would look at these as making some changes, at least to the ordinance, which we can amend and bring back if we have the input that the commission wants to see in there, some of the language, and knowing what the general public wants.
Mr. Tracy, is the, is the requirement for the setback for the fence, or for the garden, or what is?
It's for the garden.
The garden itself?
Yeah, and it depends if there's houses on the block or not, or, and how many, or how far they are off, so, but.
And I suppose it's, it's, it's possible that diff down the road, we got a legal opinion which went one way or the other, then that could be affect, that could be changed, is that correct?
Sure.
All right. Any, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for the community garden as proposed.
And regarding water, do you have any suggestion there?
I think that has to be taken up with our water department, and how they set that up, but I think their plan is fine, from what I heard.
Okay. So, before I go forward, Cheryl, regarding the water issue, I mean, right now, we cannot create a hydrant, is that correct?
No, we're for.
Right. Okay. Well, let me see if there's support for this motion. Any support for the motion?
A second.
Okay, so moved and supported, so now I'll open it up for discussion. Anyone want to discuss the motion before the body?
Mr. Chairman, if I could offer a couple of comments?
Mm-hmm.
One, in regards to the setback requirement, I think the recommendation would be to comply with our current codes and ordinances, and should we either get a legal opinion from our attorney that offers something different, or that ordinance itself changes, that they just remain in compliance with that type of language, either the attorney opinion or future amendments to our zoning code. In regards to the water, perhaps it could be contingent upon an agreement with the city of Albion relative to the installation of the water infrastructure and the rate scale that's associated with community projects. I would ask, because they do have an agreement with the Calhoun County Land Bank Authority for the property, that the city be added as, and also insured for their insurance policy.
Is that part of this application process?
No, I would ask.
Okay.
I can have a discussion outside of this process, but I would like to see that incorporated in it, and I also just want to clarify that according to our, our codes, it does seem to indicate that retail sales are not permitted on the property, so I just want to make certain everyone understands that.
Okay. Let me make sure I understand exactly your other point regarding the city of Albion. Could you say it again?
That the application be approved in compliance with our current codes, which requires a twenty-five foot setback that was referenced, subject to either an attorney opinion indicating otherwise, or an update or amendment to that code. Essentially, that they're either in compliance with the code unless there is an attorney opinion to the contrary.
And what was the other point you made about the city of Albion being added?
Added to their insurance policy.
Okay.
As part of the land lease agreement with the land bank, and it's number nine, which makes reference to the lease, she shall maintain a general liability policy covering the property in effect during the term of the lease, and lists, less or, who is just the land bank, as the named insured, so I'm just asking that they would agree to also list the city as a named insured.
Okay, so let me go back to the chief, whose motion is before the body, I mean, do you, would you accept those as friendly amendments to your motion?
Yes.
Okay, so, where, city of Albion, we added, added on to the, what was it, insurance?
As insured.
As insured, okay. And that all current codes be followed, and that if there's any, if there'd be any deviation, that would have to come from an update of the code, or, or an attorney opinion making it clear.
Correct.
Did you support, do you support that?
Do.
Okay. Any other discussion on this matter? Okay. All those in favor of approving the application as so indicated, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That passes, and now we're going to move on to the second one, which is also a community garden request, this is for two one three South Albion Street and six one eight West Erie Street. Do I have any motion, or discussion, or questions? Okay. So, are you moving the same sort of motion that the chief did?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is to approve the application with the understanding that we had before, the city Albion being added on, as insured, and that the current codes are to be followed. Any support? Okay, any, we have a motion that's been supported to approve this application, any discussion? Okay, bring this to vote, all those in favor approving this application for this community garden, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you for bringing community garden to the community, and I hope that it's very successful. Yeah, Ms. Moore, go forward.
Your honor, in my opinion, the city of Albion has no insurable interest in that property, and we've had trouble getting insurance, liability insurance, that would insure the Calhoun County Land Bank. There's no ownership interest, I mean, there's no interest of the city of Albion that can be insured. I, I just think that, I mean, it's dooming us to fail before we began.
Why is that, Ms. Moore?
Because there's no insurable interest of, I mean, Albion doesn't own the property, it's located in the city of Albion, but Albion doesn't own the property, nor is it the operator of the property, and insurance companies require that you have an insurable interest before they will insure you.
Of course, it's a community garden, so it's there for the betterment of everyone in this community, is that correct?
I understand, but, and, and we do have liability insurance, ensuring the owner of the property, the Calhoun County Land Bank Authority, and ensuring us also. But the issue is whether or not the city of Albion has an insurable interest there.
Okay, so.
I mean, how could anyone sue the city of Albion if something happened at that property?
So, are you going to approach the carrier to find out if that's going to be a problem?
I will do that, but, we don't have another meeting, you don't have another meeting, you know, for a month.
Mm-hmm. Well, why don't you approach the carrier and see what happens? I mean, there is, I believe that, obviously, the city doesn't have a normal interest, like a, like a property.
An ownership interest, correct, and in order for there to be, in order for an insurance company to insure an entity against liability, there has to be an insurable interest. I mean, I don't see how someone could sue the city of Albion if anything happened at this land, not owned by the city, not operated by the city. It's, it's a grave concern, because I have had difficulty securing liability insurance for a standalone community garden anyway. It's taken me three months to get that. And I just do not believe they're going to just insure the city of Albion, I mean, why not insure?
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond, I, I would suggest that by having the water infrastructure there, that we do have an interest, if someone should run into it, damage it, damage their vehicles, hurt themselves, based on that infrastructure, we have exposure, so I just want to make certain that the city is identified.
But wouldn't that be the same exposure to every, every home in the city of Albion? You have water's infrastructure there.
Unless we're adding something specifically for your purposes.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's the same, there's water in the street to these lots, and if we, I mean, if we're going to have to, I'll ask the carrier, but I just don't believe that
Who's your carrier, Ms. Moore?
Has an insurable interest.
Who is your carrier?
State Farm is the carrier for half of the lots, and the other carrier is auto owners.
Okay. Okay, if you can let us know, that would be great.
Well, and when, when would you like me to let you know? See, these leases going to affect March first, we take possession of this property.
Okay.
And, I mean, are you talking about at the next meeting, or?
Correspondence.
Correspondence, I mean, what?
Yeah, you can email me, that's fine.
All right, thank you.
Yep. All right, anyone else on that? All right. So, moving on now to an update on the redevelopment-ready community. Cheryl, do you have that update?
If I could ask Danielle Nelson?
Oh, Danielle, sorry.
Provide an update.
All right, so, the redevelopment-ready communities program, for those of you that are not familiar with that, that's essentially a certification program through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, MEDC, and the point of that program is to put the city in a position where it is more, more welcoming and more ready to accept developments, and essentially help developers through processes to spur more economic growth and job growth in the community. So, there are a number of tasks that are needed to do that, and so I see a couple new faces to the planning commission, so I will follow up with an email on what the best practices are for, for said program. So, with that, we had our, our RC committee meeting this past Friday, and we took a little bit of a break with a lot of the other tasks for our RC over the past few months while we were doing the comprehensive plan, so now that comprehensive plan phase one is done with, we can start moving forward with some of the other things that are, essentially that will get us closer to certification. And so, some of those tasks are really just surrounding getting zoning right, streamlining your processes for developers, as well as developing a community engagement strategy, things like that. So, we met this past Friday, and we reviewed the quarterly progress report. So, our quarterly progress report was submitted, I believe January sixth was when we submitted it, to the MEDC, and so, the things that we have completed, the comprehensive plan phase one, that has been completed. In order to complete the very first task in our RC, which is under best practices one point one, we need to finish phase two, which would be a zoning plan and future land use maps. Generating future land use maps was kind of hard, given that we didn't have a GIS system in place, but now that we are working on that, and we have very capable hands for that as well, we will be moving forward with generating some future land use maps that we could then have publicly reviewed, so have a few public input sessions and whatnot for that, to make sure that, that is what we would like to work towards. And then the zoning plan is essentially, it's not the complete redo of the zoning, but it is the plan to redo the zoning, so where's the funding going to come from, things of that nature, how are we, what are the main things that we would like to focus on in terms of our, our future zoning and future land use efforts, so. The other thing that we completed was, all we had to do to finish our downtown plan was to put that on the website, so that is now on the website, thanks to Jill. And then, we also, city council budgeted for some MML training, and there's also some funding available for training, so that was also something that the redevelopment-ready community program required. And then we talked about the next RRC tasks, so, as I said, the zoning plan and future land use maps, we've left that up to John and Caitlin Burrard, who has started interning for the city, as well as Amy DePries, and they will be working on that. And the next thing that the city is working on intensely right now is the capital improvements plan, we've put a little bit of a rush on that because of a grant application that is due April seventh, ICE grant, that can help out with infrastructure improvements. So, we'll be working on that, and the RRC provides a lot of really great guides for doing all of these things, so they actually have a step-by-step guide for doing a capital improvements plan, which is very helpful, so we kicked that off this morning with the department heads. And then, the next thing is a community engagement statement, which I can send you an example of one from Marshall, we, we actually met with Natalie Dean, the assistant city manager in Marshall, it was myself, John, Caitlin, Cheryl, and Amy, and so, we all met with Natalie Dean, who was the, you know, the head for their redevelopment-ready community process, and they were certified just a few months ago. So, it was nice to get some insight from her as to what this process entails, and it's really not as difficult as it seems, we're actually probably going to be able to develop some maybe intern projects around some of these things, where even though if the documents that they create aren't perfect, it's a lot easier to edit than it is to start from scratch. So, the community engagement statement is one of those things, I'm actually almost done with Albion's, it's a very short document, it'll go before planning commission first, and then city council, so that'll be next month, I'll put that on the agenda. And then, the fourth thing that we would like to work on for our RC is having a tracking method, feedback mechanism, and for community input for developments, so we need to have a way to track permitting and building processes, things of that nature, for incoming developments and existing developments, as well as a feedback mechanism for the developers to tell us where in our process on the city's end, could we improve things, make it a little more streamlined, make it easier to work with the city. And then, having a community input mechanism as well, so basically ensuring that developers go to surrounding, surrounding property owners and whatnot, when they're looking at putting in a development, so, so for example, with the hotel, if we had something like that in place, it would be, you know, the developer would have to make sure that there are some efforts in place to make sure that they've talked to existing business owners surrounding the property, as well as residents, too. So, the last thing on there that we'd like to continue working on over the next few months is a guide to development, which is essentially a guide to permitting and processes for the city, so Amy and John will be working on that, along with Caitlin and myself, so, and with all of these, I'll be essentially support staff for all of these projects going on. And then, the other thing that we discussed was having a charrette, which is essentially, a community-designed charrette is basically like an open house to display some of these projects and whatnot that are going on in the city, and so the idea is that we would gather community input from those, and you. And so, the idea is that we would gather community input from those, and you generally hold them for multiple days at a time, and maybe like a block of time from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, so that people have adequate time to come and comment and learn about what's going on, so that's a more input gathering session. So, we're looking at maybe doing the second week of May for that, which would be Michigan Week, and we've also, um, started calling that Albion Week as well, when we celebrate Albion. So, we're looking at a couple locations for it, the Luddington Center, the Albion District Library, potentially others, maybe doing one at each to make it more accessible to everyone in the community. And as I said, be around 4:00 to 7:00 PM is a ballpark, and then, there's a whole long list of topics there, which you can read through. If you have any other ideas for topics, um, let me know. By email would be best, and essentially, those would all, each be a station at the, um, at this community design charrette or community input charrette. So, each of those would be a station, and given that this is in May, that's why we're doing it in May, so we have some time to work on it, because this is a long list of things. Everything from what the AmeriCorps Vista team is doing, to the downtown plan, what we want to do along Eaton and Austin, um, the corridors there, uh, vacant properties, things are going on like the Albion Food Hub, the community gardens, so, long list of things that we'd like to present at this, but it should be good, so.
Thank you, Danielle. Any comments or questions from the commissioners?
All done.
All right. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation. Now, moving on to review of the comprehensive plan, I, is this the goals? Or are we looking at something else here?
Well, no, but I, what I will say is there, there's an interrelationship between the RRC, as was just outlined, so essentially, right now, we are focused on the RRC process, and specifically, um, looking towards in the coming weeks, the capital improvement process.
Right.
But did you want to...
So, let's, 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 let's bring that issue up right now, because, uh, apparently, this is on a reasonably fast track, and, uh, Cheryl, maybe you can just give the commission a, a background on this.
Okay. We are very pleased to have learned about a, a large grant that's available to us, um, the acronym ICE, and is for infrastructure improvements. It allows for $500,000 to a $2 million project. The deadline for it is April 7th. One of the requirements for the application is that you have your capital improvement plan adopted by your local governing body. So, for Albion, that means the planning commission first has to approve it and make their recommendation to the city council, and then council would need to confirm it. In order to meet the April 7th deadline, and I think this has a typo in it, Jill, do you know if the April date for council is April 3rd?
I think so.
Okay. So, the handout I gave you, um, that last line should be April 3rd for the council. So, we're looking to get the public notice out by next week. We would need to have a work session, um, hopefully with the planning commission and the city council, the week of the 14th. We will probably need a couple of work sessions even prior to that, and we are having department heads, as well as a representative from EDC, and hopefully, if we could get at least two members from the planning commission, be a part of the work group, because we have to prioritize these projects, so there's a rating process that's, um, in, included in that. Then, at the next regular meeting of the planning commission, we could have the public hearing, and hopefully, your adoption of a resolution relative to the, um, the CIP, and that would go to council on April 3rd, so we can meet that April 7th timeframe. Um, the project that we are looking at, we had a, a meeting this week with Mickey Bittner, the city's engineer, and we talked about a number of projects, but the one that seemed most appropriate, and there is a 10% local match, so that we would have matching dollars would be the Urban Street Project, reconstruction, that would also allow us, should that get approved, to offset the dollars that we had set aside for that, to go to another street project. Unfortunately, we also just received word that some of the funding we had hoped to receive for that project, we weren't eligible for, because there wasn't enough, um, truck traffic on the street, because they're now going on different streets, which, um, didn't help us in how they rate the, um, applicability of qualifying for some of the grant dollars. So, this seemed to be the one that fit, and would, uh, we would get the most bang for the buck, and we already have a lot of the engineering work relative, that would be required with the application to move it forward quickly.
So, this for paving, repaving?
Yes, and the infrastructure, so this would include the, uh, water infrastructure underneath the roads. So, what I'm asking, um, first, um, are, if you would agree with this process, two, are there at least two of you who would be willing to be a part of the work group? And then, um, three, is there a date, the week of March 14th, on or around March 14th, in which we might have a joint work session?
All right, so, anyone interested, Tom?
Sure.
Greg, okay. I, I will attempt to show up too. Are you looking specifically at the 14th?
It seemed to be a good date, just in terms of other meetings in the city.
Okay. Would this be a, what, a 6:00 PM meeting?
It could be 6:00 or 7:00.
Is this, would, would council be involved?
Yes.
Do you have to run it through the council then, to figure out what's a good day for them?
Yes, but I'll start it with you.
Okay. Twenty, 14th, that's okay. Gary, you said 6:30 is better than 6:00?
Yeah.
All right, so let's run with that and see where we go.
Okay.
If it helps to have different times, I don't know if you need everybody in the same room at the same time for a work session, or if it's effective to break it up, it's up to you.
Probably would need to be called, because it is a posted meeting, um, you could break up afterward. It could probably be arranged.
Okay.
At least next.
So, is that all for the comprehensive plan?
Um, yes.
All right. Excuse absent, uh, commissioners, now Scott indicated that he could not make it. He's the only one that's not here, so do I have a motion to excuse?
So moved.
Any support?
Support.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, okay, he's excused. Citizen comments? Anyone that, who wants to get up and talk to the planning commission at this time? Yeah, come on up, give us your name.
I'm John Guyer, 1010 South Eaton Street. I'm, uh, here on behalf of my fellow landlords, and, uh, our concern is that, first of all, you may not know who we are or what we're about, so I brought some brochures. Now, these are membership applications, but the information in here will tell you what it is we do and, and what we stand for, so I'll pass those around if that's all right. And, uh, our other concern is that, as much as, uh, the comprehensive plan, uh, I think it's a great thing, uh, the only problem we find with it is the inclusion of rent certification. And that's a system that was initially begun for large communities that had, uh, some funding to implement all the different parts of it, and, but we have tried to, uh, work with the city and with Cheryl, and, uh, I think we had some comments on it, and I think that, uh, I don't know how many of you have actually looked at the draft of the rent certification, it's probably pretty dry reading, if you're not a landlord, so I don't blame you, but I think, uh, before you approve such a thing, we would appreciate your consideration of our comments and our suggestions on, uh, what would be something we could least survive. It's a very expensive, uh, undertaking, especially for property owners, uh, of rental property, and, uh, it, uh, puts a requirement on the landlord to make a lot of changes in a real quick time, and that gets really expensive. So, we're just trying to, uh, tone it down to something that is supportable, and I think that's the, the important thing about the whole thing, is to, whatever you pass, it needs to be something the community can get behind and support. So, as it's written, we couldn't support it, but Cheryl knows that, we've, we've been back and forth, but, uh, but I'll, I'll hand out, uh, these are our comments. Ask for your, uh, consideration on it. If you haven't, don't have a copy of the draft, I have some here, I can leave them behind, uh, if not, it's on the city website. I'll just go ahead and leave them.
So, John, uh, whereas I think rental certification may be referenced in the, the plan, I mean, it's, it's really up to the city council to...
But it's called out by the, uh, the RRC requirement, requires that there be this program, and, uh, and that's a real problem, because I think of everything else that's, that's involved with the RRC and the comprehensive plan is very positive, and I, I think there's a lot of good things that can happen there, but to, uh, throw in a requirement that, uh, rental, uh, residential properties have to meet the IPMC 2015 Property Maintenance Code, uh, most houses, I mean, the house that I live in was built in 1917. I was told it was by my, uh, one of my ancestors, I don't know, but the thing is that, uh, it's a great house, it's very sturdy, and it's, and, uh, we've updated, you know, electric on, uh, heating and everything over the years, insulated, it had no insulation, it had one outlet upstairs. Heidenreichs were not, uh, splurgeers, so, if you knew the family, you'd understand, but anyway, uh, I think that, you know, you can have something that's very good, and you can, uh, do what you can to make it safe, and you certainly want it to be clean and sanitary and all that, but, uh, if you have to hold it to, uh, this other standard, which I understand, it applies to every residential building in town, virtually, so, uh, then the question is, well, why not, uh, require it before a house is sold, that it be held to this standard? And that brings in the same logic that we're thinking, you say, wow, that's a lot of money, so, and it'd probably be a great thing to do it, but you need time to do it over, so...
So, John, just so I'm clear, um, and you mentioned the, uh, redevelopment-ready community, uh, standards include reference to certification process, are, is your organization opposed in principle to any certification program, or only to this...
No, I can, I can see a need for some kind of, uh, of...
So...
Standard for rental housing, and I think we have often quoted, uh, Section 8, uh, as a type of credential that is currently in use for HUD and Section 8 housing, and, uh, it's really well documented, uh, the inspections, you have a lot of people that are qualified to do those inspections, so, uh, that's, that's what we say, okay, and, uh, that's, that's a comparable, uh, level of inspection, but the, the, uh, the, uh, IPMC 2015 code is good also. I, there are a lot of things in it I like. First of all, it, uh, defines how big a bedroom has to be for how many people, and as a landlord, I like to be able to tell a family of 10 that, no, they can't have a two-bedroom apartment, because there isn't enough room for them, and so I think that's, that's important too.
So, so your issue's mainly with the exact wording of this, of the proposed ordinance?
Yes, and the frequency of inspections, uh...
I really do think that's, that's something that's before the city council, rather than our body, where, I mean, we're here to, and the comprehensive plan is to propose general goals for our community, um, and I think your comments here are more specific to that ordinance.
Okay. Well, I, I, uh, things generate here, so the thought was, you know, we've been, we've been missing where all this is coming from, so I thought it'd be a good idea to at least talk to you and let you know where we're at.
Any questions, comments? Yeah, Greg?
I was gonna say, we, can we ask, um, ourselves, I guess, in fact, to look at what RRC is requiring? I mean, if... And that would tell us, I guess, if we're gonna make recommendations or encourage RRC certification, and that's something, I think we've all said we want to do.
We've already, yeah, we've done that, yeah.
So, what, what level?
Yeah, Danielle, what's your...
Yeah, I just want to make it clear, I can understand why someone would think that RRC does require that, um, I just double-checked the, um, best practices, it, it actually doesn't require that, um, and anything too, with, RRC is a very flexible program, it should be understood that, um, if something doesn't make sense for a community, then RRC won't require it, so, you know, if we determine that, even if, say, if that were in here already, then, and we determined that it wasn't really, didn't make fit sense for our community, it didn't fit, then they wouldn't require us to put one in place, um, but there isn't actually any language about rental inspection ordinances for, um, RRC, so...
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
John, roughly, will you be able to get back to us on the ordinance recommendations for the community garden? I should be able to get back to you about the ordinance, but I wonder here, what the planning commission thought about. Basically, thought about, uh, the appropriations that the project made, since I knew the bottom line was, oh, they were taking, they were taking, they were making, what, uh, the... The planning commission's team left with it, and it's a feedback on the planning commission on it. Uh, if you have, if, what I would ask, that if you have any recommendations, also, if you consider, if you may email me.
Okay. John, I want to thank you for coming here and, uh, you know, introducing yourself and on behalf of, and, uh, also on behalf of your association, I appreciate it, I think all we all do.
I agree with you.
It, uh, helps to know more about, uh, your organization and others, and, um, let me see if any other comments, or the, well, any citizens, any other citizens out here want to come up? No?
Mr. Chairman, could I force Caitlin to come up and introduce herself and talk about the project that she's working on?
All right, so, you've, you've been volunteered.
Hello, my name is Caitlin, I'm an Albion College alum, class of 2015. I am now at Wayne State on a master's program in urban planning and development, and I just started interning with John Tracy. I'm helping him with zoning, and we're working on the new GIS project. So, I will also be working with Danielle, um, with the RRC project, making sure that our zoning will match, but we'll also have interactive maps. That's the ultimate goal.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right, any other comments? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by, by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, okay, we adjourn, thank you.